Growth and the traffic impacts and then there even their grocery stores being over flooded with so many new people. So the growth is a big one, as well as just safety, which is, you know, through the entire city, safety is a large concern.
The residents of Ward Five will have a new councilman for the first time in 16 years. This councilman, Christopher Dare, takes over for former councilman Ron Schmidt.
It's exciting, I'll tell you. You know, I think it actually culminates everything. The idea that I get to be sitting up there, I get to help make decisions for our city, especially when it comes to some of the policy things, some of the growth we're gonna walk through. I'm excited to hopefully fan the flame of growth, of the proper growth we need for our city, but also help us just connect our community together. And I think this is where we get to, really, the rubber meets the road. We get to come together, hear from our citizens, and I'll tell you, if you're out there and you have something, we want to hear from you, we want to know what's going on, and I hope hopefully we get to represent well. A few things for Ward Five. One, we definitely, we have a lot of developments still going to happen in that area, so keeping an eye on that, making sure that happens in a fashion where we communicate. There's always going to be, when we do roads or construction, like we talked about here, there's going to be moments where it's going to impede your driving, but we can communicate well, we can help do our best to make sure that it doesn't affect you too poorly. But then also, we have a lot of empty buildings in Sparks, things that I mean, especially in Ward Five, things that I want to make sure some of our buildings are filled. Right down the road from me, I pass all the time businesses, so I hope to try to find ways to come in and get some businesses in there, so we start seeing the sales tax we want from that, the property tax, but also just, we don't want empty buildings, we want to see new businesses coming in. I'd love to see all kinds of good stuff happening down there. People's concerns, biggest is growth, traffic, and those things. And Vista definitely, I mean, we're gonna find that out there is growing, and every car we add, definitely, we need to be wise with, and making sure that we do our best to see that commute from you to go to work and back is not too bad. And so, that's one of the big ones, but I think sometimes, it's just information, you know, like, when does the roads get fixed? Some of them, I walk around, some of the roads seem like where it needed some help, and there's a schedule, and there's just some of that stuff. As I learn exactly how things function, I can get it out to my ward and to my citizens and say, hey, this is what you can expect, this is how it works, this is how it grows.
City Attorney Chet Adams and Ron Schmidt, the mayor pro tempore, were reelected before year term. It's always an exciting time when new council members are seated by the city, although we're sorry to say goodbye to Julia Raddie and Ron Schmidt. Raddie was elected in 2008 and focused her attention on revitalizing Victorian Square. She will continue to represent the city as a state senator, elected to the seat once held by the late Debbie Smith.
And I am incredibly proud, the thing I am the most proud of is how well we were together as a team, and so I thank each of you that I had the opportunity to serve with.
Ron Schmidt was one of the longest-serving council members and saw the city through many highs and lows in his 16 years, and was known as a strong proponent of fiscal responsibility.
And I've been involved in city government for 16, almost 16 years, and I've only had five other people other than the four out there that I've worked with in those 16 years. That's phenomenal government, that's phenomenal, people doing things right. And I just want to say thank you to all of you, and to all the citizens, the staff, everybody
You ready?
Marshall Archer's the one time I got an hour, I go for a run.
Marilyn, you ready?
Well, those ain't getting on, they're morning.
No. Ready?
I've never been in the morning. I used to get up at four and run every day, and then I just got out of habit.
Good evening, I'm going to call to order. Good evening, I'm going to call to order the City of Sparks Capital Improvements Advisory Committee. This committee is going to convene prior to the Planning Commission meeting, so if everybody will just bear with us, so we can get through it. So if I can please have roll call.
Commissioner Vanderwell?
Here.
Commissioner Carrick?
Present.
Commissioner Rock?
Here.
Commissioner Hearn?
Here.
Commissioner Pearson?
Present.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Shabazz?
Present.
Assistant City Attorney Allison McCormick?
Here.
Assistant Services Director Armando Renau?
Here.
Thank you. Next, we'll have public comment. This item is for either public comment on any action item or for general public comment, and is limited to three minutes. Do we have any requests to speak on this? Okay, thank you. With that, I'll close the public comment and move along to public hearing, which is review consideration and possible recommendation to the Sparks City Council to approve the adoption of the revised land use assumptions. And Mr. Martini?
Thank you, members of the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee. I'm before you again, and as I go through my presentation, as I covered at the study session, just as a quick trailer as to what's to come, we met earlier this year and brought forth this same data that included a series of calculations for our impact fee area. After you had approved it and recommended approval forward to the city council, we were contacted by one of our developers in the area, who asked us to take a hard look, particularly at the flood portion of the impact fees, and error was found, and we're back here tonight with the corrected calculations and corrected report, again, seeking another recommendation of approval. So to bring the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee up to speed with where we are, as you will recall, this look that we've done was due to a petition for inclusion into the impact fee area, the lands that were annexed on Highland Ranch Parkway, about a year and a half ago now. On October 17th, Lewis and Roca, acting as agent for the property owner, did in fact formally petition to join our impact fee area. This update does provide the review that is prescribed in NRS 278B to consider this petition. In general, we must recalculate all of the status of the existing land uses inside the impact fee area, include the proposed land uses for the area to be included, re-review the capital improvements plan to see two things. One, the status of where it is for financing and cost, and two, to evaluate if the addition of the land would require additional capital improvements for consideration within the impact fee area. As a reminder, this is the current boundary of our impact fee area. To the lower left corner of the map is the Sparks Galleria area, where Costco is, is a point of reference. Pyramid Highway runs along the western border, the northern border is La Pasada, and then the impact fee area encompasses the developments of the foothills at Wingfield Springs, Simran Upper Highlands, and then down through the southern boundary of Wingfield Springs, kind of the Hills Course area, and then back around to the Galleria. The proposed boundary for your consideration is, the only difference is the inclusion of the 67 acres that was petitioned, which is, you know, generally the southwest corner of Highland Ranch Parkway, about 67.4 acres. Again, for the record, you did meet on March 15th, we did review the land use assumptions, capital improvements plan, and impact fees associated with the analysis, based on a report penned in February by House Moran Consultants Incorporated. As a clarification, in your staff report, I did a typo all through it and wrote 8CMI, please in your mind think HMCI. After the public hearing, like I said, we did have an inquiry from one of the developers, asked us to check that fee. Once we looked at it, it became incredibly obvious that there was a problem, although it had been reviewed three or four times previous and no one saw it. After considering the inquiry, we did check all of the fees, not just flood. We exhaustively went through the computer program to calculate the fees, we did find an error only in flood. The other three fees being sanitary sewer, parks and recreation, and of course, Fire Station Six are correct as they were in the February report and are still reflected correctly in this May report. Like I said, we did have an error in flood fees, they have been corrected. In our 2018 update of analysis of land use, which is a big component of what you are tasked to review and forward your recommendation, we show total service areas within the new boundary, which would include the land uses proposed for the Highland Ranch property of 26,541 service units. We have developed to date, or as of, not to date, excuse me, that is incorrect, as of December 15th of 2017 was a cutoff for looking at this, we had developed 12,529 service units, leaving nearly 14,012 units still to come. If we compare the master plan land use analysis within IFSA I, back to the last analysis, which was done in 2016 by this CIAC, the net difference between the two is about a plus 105 service units. That's due to absorption, small changes in land use that most have come before you, plus the addition Highland Ranch, as you've probably saw from the table I gave you, adds about 374 service units. Mr. Critten and I did a fairly tight analysis, and some of the areas where we showed some service units in 2016, due to some acreage changes as we processed the new GIS data, we did see a little bit of shrinking. So, again, this is the breakdown of full build-out service units, where we are in the development cycle, inside those, these are separated by the land uses that are included in Impact Fee Service Area One. Interesting that we still have about 7,439 development units on the residential side, and then a mixture of business park and general commercial make up most of the non-residential, and that is 6,573 service units left. This probably doesn't show up real well. For the record, and it is included, this is the master table that is used to go by each of the development areas within that border and break it out by those different land use types. I admitted that from our March 15th analysis, I did include it for your record. The revised impact fee for flood control, so the flood control fees calculated in the February analysis were wrong, they're listed in the first column. The corrected, I'm calling them the April 2000 HMCI analysis and report, brought those up, and I will admit that as I sat here that night, there were questions. I think the CIAC felt that there was even, something seemed to be wrong, that these, the impact fees had come down too much for such small land use changes. Your guts were right, our computer program was wrong, it is fixed. You can see that the impact fees come up fairly substantially. To be more specific, the cost, the existing cost of existing infrastructure, which was about $2.4 million that's still left to be paid, was left out of the analysis, and that's why it's substantial, it's nearly 45% of the whole cost. The total impact fees, including sanitary sewer, flood control, parks and rec, and fire stations by land use type are shown before you here. So for a single-family home, all said, in totaled, it's going to be $1,907 per home. For the non-residential land uses, remember, these fees are assessed per thousand square feet of structure. And then finally, an overall comparison of where these proposed fees line up with the existing fees, which are the 2016 fees, you can see the change to the fee is relatively nominal. They're, you know, some are up, some are down. The net changes are, that's mainly a reduction. Areas that went up, it's probably changes we found in GIS associated with acreage that just grew a little bit. But these are much more in line with the 2016 fees. If you'll recall, in March, there was a substantial decrease of nearly 25 to 30% in some of the land use categories, which drew the questions from you. So for the record, I would like to add two more items into tonight's discussion. The land use assumptions for the Highland Ranch Parkway, in case you weren't able to see them on that massive table, came to 374 service units. As the developer requested, it includes 200 multi-family unit considerations, so that's 200 service units of its own. And then about the remainder being general commercial, which as you will recall, they don't have a project yet, but they wanted that allowance in there. And secondarily, as the city engineer and I reviewed this, as of right now, there is no need to increase the capital improvements program, meaning adding any more hardware to support the proposed land uses with the additional land. With that, that concludes my presentation, I'm available for any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Martini. Commissioner Fuehens?
Yeah, Commissioner Fuehens. John, does this go back to January of 2018? Is it retrodated, or what's the calendar year? So our cutoff for looking at how many building permits had been pulled was, we cut it off a little early, December 15th of 17, and then we ran the land use analysis. So that's, that developed column you see, that's of December of last year. Will they go back and collect any more fees, or refund, give credits to people that have already pulled? No, because I never took these fees forward to council, thank God Ed Davis from Stonebrook came in and said, will you please look? They were never charged at that rate. We've been, we are still, as we sit tonight, we're still on the 2016 rates. So, no harm, no foul, error caught, error fixed, now for your consideration.
Thank you. Commissioner Peterson?
Commissioner Peterson, John, on these last figures you gave us, the end of the project, has the open space been determined up there yet on that project?
Open space on the Highland Ranch annexation? No, it has not.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carey?
Thank you, Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Carey. John, has this gone to, there's also, there's a technical advisory group, it's the enterprise-
Development Services User Group. We actually have-
Have we received any feedback from them?
Well, we actually have the cart a little ahead of the horse. Since most of the folks that serve on our Development Services Users Group are in the industry, they're pretty busy like the rest of us, the earliest we could get them together is tomorrow morning. So, we will present them with this, so as of right now, I don't have a recommendation from them to you, so you will be considering it without that knowledge. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing. Are there any requests to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the committee for any comments, questions, motion. I'm going to call in somebody. Commissioner Peterson?
I won't make the motion, but I do like to make a comment.
Sure.
And I'm sure John's in agreement, and I'm sure every one of us are. I am certainly glad we found this error.
I am too.
Yes.
And it got corrected before any damage could be done.
And Commissioner Peterson, if you don't mind, I think that speaks to the involvement of our development community. They have embraced this program, they've been supportive of it, to the point where they said, boy, that just doesn't look quite right, will you please look again?
Right.
Yeah, we're very lucky.
I would give them our thanks for finding that, too.
I will, I'll tell Ed next time I see him.
Remotion, Commissioner Peterson?
Oh, please.
You volunteered.
All righty. I'd like to make a motion that we forward a recommendation to the Sparks City Council to approve the adoption of the revised, the land use assumption, capital improvement plan, and imposition of the impact fees for impact fee service area number one.
Second. Okay, I have a first and a second, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next, I need a motion for adjournment of the committee.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Carey, I'll move to adjourn.
Madam Chair, for the record, this is Allison McCormick, public comment.
Oh, I apologize.
Thank you.
Oh, I was following the agenda, I apologize. Okay, so is there, okay, I'll open it again for public comment, do we have any requests to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'll close it, and I'll entertain the motion for adjournment.
This is Commissioner Carey, I'll make the motion again to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, committee adjourns, thank you. Next, we'll call to order the Sparks Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, May 3rd, if I can please have roll call.
Commissioner Vanderwell?
Here.
Commissioner Carey?
Present.
Commissioner Rock?
Here.
Commissioner Fuehens?
Here.
President?
President?
Assistant City Attorney Allison McCormick?
Here.
Assistant City Services Director Eric Alomah?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move along to public comment, this again is on items either on an action item or general public comment, and it's limited to three minutes. Do I have any requests to speak on this? Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move along to approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Carey, agenda looks fine to me, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, motion carries. Next, we'll move along to approval of minutes, review and possible approval of the minutes of the April 3rd Planning Commission Study Session.
I have found nothing wrong with them, so I'll make the motion that we approve those minutes for the study session.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson. Second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Fuehens, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next, we'll review and possible approval of the minutes of the April 5th Planning Commission meeting for possible action.
Again, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes as read.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next, we'll move along to announcements and committee reports.
The only announcement, Madam Chair, is that the next meeting of the Planning Commission will be on June 7th.
Thank you. Next, we'll move along to informational items.
We don't have any information items for you today.
Great, thank you. Next, we'll move to public hearing items, and it's PCN 18-0013, consideration and possible action of a conditional use permit.
Chairman Vanderwell, members of the Planning Commission, I'm Ian Critten, Senior Planner. As stated, this is a request for a conditional use permit for a major recreational facility. This is at the property address of 7660 Patrina Way. This is a 10.66 acre parcel. This parcel is not in the City of Sparks, it's in our sphere of influence, but the City of Sparks does have planning jurisdiction on this item, or on this property. Looking at the vicinity map that's before you, I have actually been brought to my attention by a member of the public and by Commissioner Fuehens, that I have the wrong parcel highlighted. The notice was correct, the only thing that changes here is I've highlighted the wrong parcel, and then as we look at the comp plan map, it actually changes the designations, although it doesn't change them in a meaningful way. As you can see, this parcel is, here's Pyramid Way, here's kind of to the southeast of the, on the map, and Dolores Drive is a long drive that comes up here and terminates in a private road out here to where the parcel is, this parcel here, if you can see my selector there. So the highlighted in yellow now is the, is the correct parcel. To give you a little background on how this parcel, this area, became the City of Sparks' jurisdiction, this area was included in our spheres of Influence by the Regional Governing Board in 2006. The City of Sparks subsequently master planned this area, to give you a little, again, a little more depth on this. So this parcel was zoned to GR, the county. When this area was incorporated into, or I should say included into, the City of Sparks' sphere of influence, that zoning goes away, it disappears, it becomes their land use designation. When the City of Sparks in 2007 master planned this area, we changed that designation from GR, which was its zoning, that became its land use designation, to OS, which is open space and rural reserve. Then in 2008, this area was included in the West Pyramid Plan, which changed its designation further, again, we're on the wrong parcel highlighted, down here to open space and LLR, which is large lot residential. So the City of Sparks exercises extrajurisdictional jurisdiction, extraterritorial jurisdiction, sorry, the long string there, over this area pursuant to NRS 278.02788, which actually gives the city very wide control over areas in our sphere of influence. But through a protocol agreement with Washoe County, we actually have limited our sphere of influence to planning issues. We regulate that, the city, or the county, Washoe County still regulates business licenses, building permits, and so on and so forth, although building permits, the city does do a planning review of those building permits. To add a little extra layer of confusion to this, when those parcels come to us, if a parcel in this area wanted to just do a building permit, we would review that parcel, but we have to have a zoning designation with which to apply our zoning code to it. That designation comes from this chart, this is essentially our annexation conversion chart, and it uses general rural, which is still a designation that sits on that property, but only for purposes of giving us a point with which to correlate city zoning to, if that makes sense. So this is, this property has, A40 is the governing zoning from the City of Sparks that regulates the uses and development on this parcel. So the use of a, of the parcel as a roping and dancing horses cultural event is not called out in our zoning code. However, major recreational facility does include, we've, staff felt that it met that definition because it's large, it's outdoor, and it's substantially similar to a riding stable, an entertainment complex, stadium and arenas, which are all listed as uses that fall under the category of major recreational facility. So a major recreational facility is a permitted use in the A40 district, subject to a conditional use permit, which gets us to where we are tonight, reviewing this conditional use permit. So this use, or very similar use, was granted temporary use permits twice last year to hold a rodeo, roping, dancing horse type of event. The applicants came to this this year, and due to the size of the event and the frequency that is being requested, it was determined by the planning manager who oversees the temporary use permits, that it was over the scope of what a temporary use permit is designed to accommodate, and so that a conditional use permit was the more appropriate route with which to seek approval for this use. City staff worked with county staff as we went through this process, both through our pre-application process and through planner view for this request, worked with them to determine the conditions with which they thought were, this use would be appropriate. And so, all of the conditions that are mentioned here in a moment, I'm going to go through those conditions and what kind of concerns they are designed to address, all of those were done with county input, so that we know that they are going to have a lot of their responsibility for enforcement, we wanted to make sure that they were included in any discussions about what kind of conditions they were looking for in this, for this request. We'll go forward to the site plan for the site that was submitted. So the Sparks City Code requires that all access roads and parking be paved for uses in the city. After reviewing this, staff felt that because this is on a private dirt road and is going to a residence that's not in the city, that gravel improvements would be sufficient to accommodate for the parking area. And condition three, or proposed condition three addresses that issue. If we go back to the map- If we go back to the map, uh, pavement ends roughly here on Dolores Drive. And from that point on, this is a private roadway, um, that is maintained or, or, or exists by easement on these parcels. And so, since the pavement ends there, we know that, and this was brought up by, uh, the, uh, Washoe County staff as well, that dust will be an issue and there is a requirement, uh, or proposed condition, uh, condition, uh, oh, I'm sorry, I've gotten ahead of myself, give me one moment. Oh, okay. So, uh, step back a little bit, like I mentioned, this is a private easement that, that these roads are maintained by. Staff does not have a copy of that easement yet, but we would like a copy of that easement. There's a condition number 16, requires that that easement or some other instrument be produced that, that in, that references that this level and type of traffic is, is permitted per the easement that grants access to this parcel. And condition 16 would require that that, that be produced, um, in order to, to hold these events. Uh, additionally, uh, if, if this were a city or county street and there was additional impacts being put upon it, those impacts would need to be accommodated for by the applicant. And so, um, we feel that this is a similar situation, that the applicant will need to produce some sort of an agreement that shows what kind of, uh, maintenance repair they will, uh, what, what would be their burden and, and responsibility for, for that kind of a, that kind of development. Or they need to produce a traffic study that can, can prove that there is, there's no, uh, associated impact with, uh, the level of traffic that they'll generate. Uh, that, that takes me to the last part that I got, I got, I kind of ahead of myself on, is that, uh, there, there will be additional dust on this dirt road associated with their events. There is a requirement, um, in condition four, that would require that the roads be watered before and during an event as necessary to reduce dust. Additionally, there is, uh, a, a new, uh, condition that wasn't supplied to you in the staff report and, and I didn't have an opportunity to talk about at, uh, study session because I hadn't heard back from, uh, air quality, from Washoe County Health's Air Quality Management Division. They submitted a letter with rules that they have for air quality, and there's an additional condition, I believe it's condition number 18, that will require that they abide by all of the, the, uh, the regulations that are set forth in that letter. Going back to the site plan, Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District requires that a 20-foot all-weather access, fire access road be maintained around the exterior of the site. The, they, the opinion of the Fire Protection District is that this road that's kind of designed for the, the horse trailers and the horse trailer parking will suffice as long as those, 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 those qualifications exist, that it's all-weather and it's 20-foot that are remain clear at all times, so that if they need to come through, they, they have the route to be able to do that. They also require the, the Washoe, the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District also has regulations on the location size and, and setup of all tents and pop-up kind of shelters. And so any tents, pop-up shelters will need to be reviewed prior to any event by the Fire Protection District to verify that they don't have any, um, issues. Looking at the, the site plan that was provided, uh, they didn't believe that they had any issues with what was currently, with, where they were currently located, but they wanted to make sure that if, if there was a change, they were aware of it and that, um, they could make comments as, as needed. The Washoe County District Health also wrote a letter detailing their concerns, uh, and requirements for this request. Their concerns briefly were the number of non-served toilets. They said 10 needed to be provided for guests and two for staff, this condition six requires that, or, or is to that effect. Also that all food and beverage sales must meet the county health standards and be permitted to, uh, by them. Condition 10 would require that. And that food trucks may be, uh, must be appropriately licensed, condition 12 addresses that. And then they also submitted a letter with additional requirements specifically talking about the well water, where it can or can't be used on, on the site. And it said, and all of the, those requirements and all others that are, that are listed in that letter dated April 20th from, uh, James English would need to be required, that's, uh, condition 14. Additionally, uh, one of the conditions that we looked at initially with, uh, county staff is amplified sound. In order to mitigate amplified sound, condition, uh, well, I didn't write down which condition addresses here, but
Seven.
Seven, condition seven, uh, requires that all speakers be oriented towards the center of the property and that, uh, the decibel level at the ba, property boundary should not exceed 65 decibels. For reference, uh, that's about the sound, the, 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 how loud a common, normal conversation is about 65 decibels. So that would be a requirement. Uh, the applicant indicated in their application that the events are intended to run from noon till sunset. So it is proposed that those hours of limitation be, uh, adopted by condition, um, and condition eight addresses that. Because of these limited hours, uh, there should be no need for, uh, outdoor lighting, and so the condition, um, number 13 requires that no lighting be allowed, and if lighting is requested, it would have to be through amendment to this conditional use permit. The applicant has also requested that they be able to hold these events, uh, once a month, May through October. There's a typo in the, staff misinterpreted what was asked for in the application, um, and, and thought they wanted some additional dates around holidays. After talking with the applicant, that's not the case. The staff report still says they were, they were allowing 10, but the conditions of approval have been amended for six. There'd be six events once a month, May through October. Yeah, so that's in condition nine, which has been corrected. Comments from the, from the, the neighbors and from the public also brought to the attention that there's been an increased, uh, issue with flies. That's very hard for us to specifically target, but, uh, a condition has been proposed that would require that all, uh, a commercial trash, uh, enclosure be on the premises and that all trash and manure be, manure generated by the events be removed from the events, uh, from the location within 48 hours. That's in condition 15. And then there are five findings associated with conditional use permits. Finding C1 is that the compliance is in, uh, that the request is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. If we go back and look at the comprehensive plan and remember that we're one parcel lower. The, the land use designations on this parcel are OS and LLR. Both of those designations list, uh, recreational uses as acceptable pri, or non-primary uses. Based on the, the, how often these occur and, and what's being requested, the, the primary use of this property will still be residential. And so we felt that the, that, uh, that was, uh, in co, in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Also, this request supports goal MG2 of the comprehensive plan by adding diversity to land use, specifically recreational land uses. It also supports policy RC24, which is that we support cultural, uh, resources in the city's jurisdiction. And so with that, staff feels that finding C1 can be made. Finding C2, if we look at the, the vicinity map here, um, is that the, the request is compatible with the surrounding land uses. So the site is, uh, as mentioned, about 10.66 acres, and it is surrounded by plus or minus 10-acre parcels, um, on all sides. The keeping of horses and livestock are common and permitted uses, uh, in the, the area. And the use of the subject property as a roping and dancing horse event is not out of character for the area. Concerns about compatibility are based on the operations of that event and not the, the nature of the event itself. As condition, staff believes that the find, that finding C2 can be made. Uh, finding C3 is about the impairment of natural resources. Staff does not believe that, uh, the use of this site for the requested use will have any impact on the provision of natural resources to the, the city as a whole. And so we believe, staff believes that finding C3 can be made. Uh, finding C4 is that the application as submitted and conditioned will address identified impacts. There are 18, I believe, uh, conditions of, proposed conditions of approval, uh, as, as I kind of went through and discussed all those. And staff believes that if these conditions are met, that this item is, uh, that will address the identified impacts of this use. And so in staff's opinions, finding C4 can also be made. Finally, finding C5 required, is a requirement for notice. Conditional use permits are required to notice, uh, all properties within 500 feet of the site. In addition, they're also required to notice, uh, a minimum of 30, uh, property owners. In order to meet the, the 30 property owners requirement, they actually, the notice actually went out to, uh, 1,500 feet. And that notice was mailed on April 19th. Then there was also notice published in the Reno Gazette Journal on April 18th. And the Planning Commission saw it functions as the, uh, public hearing for this request. In addition, uh, either in this packet or, or handed out to you at this meeting or at the study session meeting, there have been 40 emailed responses, um, about this, uh, this request. Primarily those are in opposition, and then staff did also receive 10 phone calls, uh, or phone calls from 10 individuals, or received multiples from a few, that were, uh, also in opposition to this item. I believe that covers my presentation, I am available for any questions that the Planning Commission may have.
Great. Is the applicant here and do they wish to speak? Come on up. Now please state your name for the record, you have 15 minutes.
Thank you, my name is Lou Benadina.
Good.
Okay, so, all I have to say is, um, we trying to do this, and we've been doing this on different areas. We started on Gandolfo Arena five years ago, and we doing like this special events, Cinco de Mayo, and then, um, Christmas Parade, Sparks. We've been doing it for quite a bit. And this is just about keeping and show our culture, about team roping and dancing horses show. And this is more like friends and family events that we want to keep doing on our community. And at our time, we do this for fundraising, for people that really need, they're hurt, they need help. And that's what this is about. All the requirements from City of Sparks, I'm willing to do everything that is in there. As far as dust control, uh, road maintenance, uh, and everything, I have no problem to agree with that. What we just looking for is be able to keep our culture and show the kids and the family what we can do with the horses. That's all I had to say. This is not about business or, um, changing our zone to commercial, like a lot of people are thinking. This is not that ma, this is not that big of an event. We just try to keep our family together and show and share our culture and have fun. Six events a year, we okay with that, no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have some questions.
Okay, Mr. Medina, can you please sit for a moment, because I think the commissioners may have some questions.
Okay.
Do we want to, okay. As far as the commissioners, do we want to ask questions now, or do we want to wait until after public comment? Would you like to ask now?
We can have a return after public comment.
Yes, of course.
All right, that's fine, thank you all.
Is that, is that acceptable? Okay. Just be prepared, you'll be called back up. Thank you. With that is this public hearing item, and I'm going to open the public hearing. Madam Secretary, request to speak.
Madam Chair, I have, um, a number of requests here, and then I have a number of requests who want, with your permission, I'd like to put on the record that are either in opposition or in favor, just by reading their names.
That's fine.
I have a, uh, single, um, submittal in favor of, and that is from Maria Medina. The names that I will read now are all in opposition of this project.
Okay.
Cecilia Garay, Bill Richards, Bob Davis, Steve Botfeltke, Leonard Danner, Howard Danner, Linda Collins Pringle, Joe Granata, Lola Granata, Dana Ray Phoenix, Rob Hord, Mies Boel, Barbara Eastman, Diana Pargian, Mike Pargian, Mike Flanagan, Mindy Flanagan, Berta Wadsworth, Lori Kreis, Deborah Walker, Nick Hanisidl, Kim Grunset. And then I have these names that wish to speak.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, so, I'm gonna call you up, and, um, we have about 17 requests to speak, so, um, I'll call the first one to come up, and then I'll call the second one, and if they'll just pick a seat in the front row, so we can kind of move it along quickly. So, um, first up is Linda Davis. Okay, great. If you'll just please say your name and address into the record, that'd be wonderful.
Linda Davis, 7595 Marie Way, Sparks, this neighborhood. We have a very peaceful and quiet and wonderful neighborhood. I live four parcels west, so that's on up Dolores, outside of what normally would have been notified. But I can tell you, when he held his first event, I heard music and loudspeakers from noon into the evening. When I went down Dolores, which is our only way of getting out of our house, I saw many, many, many cars parked at his property, and I thought they were having a special birthday wedding something event. And I thought, wow, wonderful, and had no reason to complain. The music did go on, it stopped, I was not in town for his second event. So I do object to it becoming a repetitive, noisy, and arguably a commercial event. Because there will be food sales, there will be alcohol sales, there'll be stuff going on. I don't want to see this neighborhood commercially developed. Might start with some special events, and then we're going to have some special businesses. I don't want to see that happen in this area. Our infrastructure will not support this kind of traffic. It is a dirt road, we all have to use it. The people whose property that dirt road is on are responsible to take care of it. The county, the city, nobody helps us maintain this dirt road. And there are many venues available for his type of event in a lot of places. So I read all of the letters in the package, and I have to say, I was particularly offended by one of the supportive letters. Dana DePello insinuated that our opposition to this was driven by some questionable agenda. I assure you, our agendas are not questionable, and they are not culturally motivated. We want to maintain a quiet, residential quality of life that we enjoy, period. So keep in mind, tonight, this Planning Commission is making a purely bureaucratic choice for our neighborhood because we have no representation here. We're only under your influence. Your decision's not urgent, but it's really, really important to us. I don't think special use should be a repetitive infringement on the neighbor's quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Medge and I- Midge and I apologize, it looks like Belavica. Okay, yeah, I apologize if I slaughtereded it. And then if, it looks like Yara Medina?
Yeah.
Okay, if you'll come up and just sit in the front, you can speak after.
I brought notes.
Perfect. And again, if you'll just state your name for the record and your address.
My name is Midge Bevalacqua.
Thank you.
3755 Amy Road, Reno, Nevada. I've been friends with the Medina family and neighbors for going on 11 years. They have moved from the local area, but when they, from where I live, I found them to be very family oriented, community minded, and they wish to be able to educate all facets of the community in their horse related activities. There were a number of activities very similar to this in my neighborhood. They invited everybody in the neighborhood to come and enjoy these activities and I understand the music is loud, but I enjoy it and once a month and if they meet all of the, of the requirements set out, I hope that you would look in favor of this request. He is planning on meeting every requirement and I, we lived on dirt roads, I still am on dirt roads, I understand living in a neighborhood, but I am in favor and hope that you look on this favorably. Thank you.
Thank you. And then if Lupe Medina can come on down and sit in the front, oh, you, I'm sorry. You didn't have to fill out to speak because you're the applicant, so we're good.
Good evening. My name is Yahida Medina. I am the assistant for the applicant. So pretty much as Lupe has already covered the basic things that these events are not to be business, I understand that we are going to be selling beverages and we also are going to be selling food with the proper food trucks, but the only expenses or the only sales that will be going to us would be from the drinks, but they will not be staying with us. Those will be to cover the expenses that we have already previously spent with trying to get this application done and also with any other expenses that will be for the future as in getting the further events because to be able to have these events, there are expenses. It's not just everything that we have already there is provided. He didn't really clarify much of, for some of these events, we will base it off of monthly theme. For an example, Cinco de Mayo is this weekend, so if we were to be doing it in May, it would be to celebrate Cinco de Mayo. If we do one in June, it could be also for a specific event or theme or if someone that we know, a family member, friends, they need help for anything as in medical, just money wise, financially that they need help, we will do a fundraiser. The event will be a fundraiser to help out families. It's what we've done in the past with other areas, not in our home, but in different areas in Reno, Sparks. We've gone out to Fallon, Winnebago, all areas, we will fundraise to help families in the theme of having our dancing horses and the team roping. With the whole trafficking and having a lot of cars coming, yes, we understand there will be many cars, but like we mentioned before, it is, will be a family orientated event. We have a large family ourselves and our friends also have families, so we will have more than the normal gathering, which is why we decided to file for the special use permit and now consider it a conditional use. I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like, and I apologize if I slaughter, so please correct me. It's Ruba Kel Nunez.
Rubi Sally.
Okay, if you'll please come up. And then Veronica Cortez, if you can sit up front, please, for the next.
Hello, my name is Rubi Sally and Rubi Sally Nunez. I live in 1450 Rosie Finch Drive in the Spanish Springs area nearby. And I am in favor of this. The reason why, I've known this family since I was a baby and we, all I know is we're all about the family. I have three kids, I have a three-year-old baby girl that all she's about is about horses. She can't wait for the weekend to come over and just be on the horses. It's an event that's family, it's friends and I see it safe where other than, you know, youth or young people just going out partying and being danger, I see a friend environment where my kids can come over and I know they're going to be safe, where they're going to be, you know, other than just cell phones or, you know, just having fun with horses, learning our culture, learning more about Mother Nature where you get to enjoy the horses and get to know other stuff than just being home or being out, partying out. So I'm in favor of that. I do understand that there is noise. I do understand that it could be a little maybe messy, but I mean, as family that I know this family, they do control that very well. They keep in mind of, they control it where we can pick up the garbage, pick up anything and there's no mess. I've known them for so long that I know that if they promise they'll do whatever it takes for them to keep it up, they will do it. So my fav- my, the reason why I'm also, you know, looking forward to this is because my kids are also into it and I enjoy it. We enjoy everything that's just, you know, getting from just being at home and phone where you don't even communicate with your kids, I see that as an activity where you can go and be with the family and enjoy, you know, other than just being on your phone in that little world and I think it's fun where you can enjoy other than, you know, outside and Mother Nature and enjoy horses and learn more about horses and animals, you know? And that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Veronica and then Yizzi Medina, if you can come sit up front, please.
Can I get the overhead, please? Thanks. Good afternoon and good evening. My name is Veronica Cortez. I'm actually out of Sun Valley, 280 Mineral, graduate of Reed High School, so I love Sparks. Thank you, thank you. I'm here actually, thank you, representing, helping out Lupe Medina. The reason I'm here is because I've worked with Lupe Medina for many years and I have a letter here from the mayor of Sparks dated in 2012, when we actually started the rodeos up, sorry, in Gandolfo Arena, so that's from him. He was in total support of us. Mr. Gandolfo was also in support of these type of events because they are so community oriented. Like he said, we're in the hometown Christmas parade, we're in the Reno rodeo parade, we do the Nevada Day down in Carson City. We need a place where we can work our, work our traditions, work our horses. In regards to other arenas in the area, we've already been denied this year up at Gandolfo Arena to do these type of events. We've also been denied in the Hidden Valley Arena. We're looking at the Ironwood Arena right now, not with Lupe Medina, but with another organization. So here's another letter from a racetrack that's actually out in Spanish Springs and we actually helped them, I personally helped them go through the whole process of getting their special events remit through the county. So I can verify through the events that I've done with Lupe, that he is very compliant on anything that's required from the county or the state or the city. And I can guarantee that the purpose of these events are to keep our traditions going. Like I said, I was born and raised here, my dad's Hispanic, so I love the dancing horses. I own one myself, I sing on horseback and if it wasn't for the opportunities that Lupe gave me to practice and actually work through these traditions, it would be a dying art. So when you see us in the parades or, you know, out doing it, you know, we need these type of places that we can because there really is no other places. That's all I can say is that he's always been compliant with the county and I've pushed some papers for him, so that's what I do. I've known his family, I've seen his girls grow up, you know, I've never had any incidences or problems with them. Like I said, they just try to be compliant so that we can finish our, you know, continue our traditions and cultures. I have a two-year-old rides bareback right now, so it's a nice place that we can just go and take our families to. So, thank you.
Thank you. And then if Nancy Danner can come sit down front, please.
Hi, my name is Yisam Medina. I am the daughter of Lupe Medina. I'm just gonna talk a little about my personal experience on these events. To me, it is, it's my fa- it's my father's dream, seeing him grow up with horses and I grew up with horses. I remember when I was seven is when I started to ask him for one and he gave us one. Throughout growing up, I would ride horses as a cowgirl and I enjoyed it and whatnot, but what I really wanted to do was be a charra. And that's what most of this, most of the people that come to our events are charros and charra. So seeing my dad do these, what we call in our Hispanic culture, a coleadero, is mostly for our charros, which I appreciate so much because since I was little, I've always wanted to wear my big dress with my big sombrero. At these events, I, I'm everywhere. I'm walking around, I'm hanging out with my family, hanging out with my friends, probably 10, 20 faces that I've never seen before, but other than that, all the people that come to my house and are at these events, whether it's at my house in Ferley in Winnebago, we have seen growing up. It's not no one who we don't know and if it is someone we don't know, it's a friend of a friend, but we know the person who brought them there. So these, these events to me aren't just something that is, you're gonna see random faces. It's always family, always family, it's always friends. I see the same people, I see the people who see me grow up, see the people who appreciate what I do for them. I see the people who tell me, wow, you've gotten so far into your horse riding, people who compliment me and my sisters for what we do in this cultural. Being a charra to me is so much, so I want to continue it. I want to continue and I want to show, I have a little sister who's 12, I want to show her that she can earn her dress too. I can show, I want to show all the kids that we grew up with that they can earn their sombreros, they can own their boots, they can wear them without just fashion, but actually in the culture. It's to us, these events and the stuff we do here is a prize. If we are, if we are have the opportunity to be involved in it, it's a prize to us. It's not just to show, oh, look, I'm so cool. No, it's, I am part of this. I am, this is growing in my heart. So I, I am totally for my father, not just because he's my father. There's a lot of things I turn my back on him for, but because I've seen, I grew up in this. I grew up in this and this has opened so many doors for me. This has opened so many doors for me and I love what I do. I love what I do and I love how it's made my heart grow, so I'm not just, it's made me and my personal, like growing up, it made me a better person and I want to help all these kids have their opportunity and their spot in our culture also. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Danner and then Cherie Danner, if you want to come up and.
I have a petition here, I don't know if you want that or.
You can give it to the recording secretary, thank you.
My name is Nancy Danner. I live at 7790 Dolores Drive. I've taken a couple of things out of the staff report that I'd like to address and on the conditions of approval four, seven and eight, I'm wondering who is going to enforce all of these things that you've listed that he has to be in compliance with, making sure that everything is watered during the event, that the sound is where it's supposed to be and the noise, the hours of operation. Who within the county is going to monitor that on any given weekend? I'm also wondering about the finding number C three where he states that the majority of the improvements have already been made and I'm wondering why Mr. Medina would make those improvements without this being approved even and if he was in compliance with code enforcement, obtaining permits for moving all of the, the dirt that he moved, the grading permit, whether or not that was something he did. In the analysis on page four, he says that though this is not a riding stable, which is in the sphere of things that the Sparks can do, we have horses out there and, and riding horses. So, you know, I like horses, but I don't have one and I think there are probably more people that don't own horses out there than do. And so my question to you is that there's probably a lot of people out in our area that have guns and so should we maybe have a shooting range out there which falls into that category because we have guns? I mean, we can, you could approve that, you could change that and say that, hey, it's okay, there's a lot of people have guns. A lot of people have motorhomes, should we have a recreational vehicle park or a campground? We're a residential area, I mean, where, where do you draw the line? Where do you, where do you not make it okay to make this a huge event? They are charging a fee, I understand, I could be wrong. They are selling alcohol, so you are giving them free rein to have people sit out in the hot sun, drink alcohol, drive cars and trucks, pickups, trailers with horses, down Dolores, which we maintain, we walk our dogs, we jog, we ride bikes, kids out there on the skateboards. It doesn't just affect the dirt portion, all the way up, there are kids playing out there, there are no sidewalks. So they drink all afternoon, his, according to him, because if they sell the alcohol, then they won't drink so much. I just think it's a, it's a recipe for disaster that you are giving them license to sell alcohol at a quote, "family event" and then turning them loose on the highway, Pyramid Highway and Dolores Drive. I would urge you to deny this for the neighborhood and I wonder how a voice of one or two or three outweighs a voice of 25 or 30 or 40. I appreciate your time, I know you've put a lot of effort in this and, and we appreciate it, all of us do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Cherie Danner and then Wayne Patterson, if you can go ahead and come up and sit.
Hello, I'm Cherie Danner and I live at 7500 Marie Way and pretty much Nancy covered what I wanted to say. I'll just go over it briefly. My main objection is the traffic that's going to be generated and that will go through the Desert Springs subdivision, which is an old subdivision, has narrow roads, no sidewalks, children play on it, they ra- they ride their bikes, they skateboard, they play ball and there's no way to get to this event without going through the Desert Springs subdivision. And their proposal said they could have up to 250 people coming and going at all day, all hours of the day, on weekends, and they mentioned holidays, although they changed that, but that's exactly when children are out of school and playing on the streets. So I think you need to consider that and I would hate for a tragedy to happen. We should maybe prevent this from being approved in the first place before we have that tragedy. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Wayne Peterson and then Jerry Pringles up next, if you can sit up front for me, please.
Hi, my name's Wayne Patterson. I live at 7325 Patrino Way. I'm, I'm really glad to hear the Medina's are so interested and have such strong value, family values because I think you're seeing how strong the family is out there in this neighborhood. We all stick together on these sorts of things and we've had a couple other issues come up. I hope you'll read all of those emails and I hope you'll read my email. Somebody wanted to build a dog kennel one time. So we've been down this path before and I kind of feel like after listening to Mr. Pritten, like a bunch of bastard children because we keep getting passed back and forth to all these different governing bodies and everything falls through the cracks and one of the big cracks that I see in this whole thing, besides all the problems with the road, the, the noise, I'm a half mile away and I could hear the music on my patio last year. But who's gonna, who's gonna police all this stuff? And what, what it's gonna come down to is it's gonna be us, the neighbors, they're gonna have to complain because I, as far as I know, there's not gonna be anyone monitoring this and it's gonna be left up, lest, left up to us to go ahead and make a phone call to the Washoe County Sheriff's Department. And so here we're gonna, already, you can, I was a little bit disappointed in a couple of emails I read because we're already creating hate and discontent for no good reason. This to me, looks like a commercial enterprise that has no business in a residential neighborhood. I live just a few blocks down. I live just a few blocks down the way here, in Unnoring Drive and Sparks. And I moved out there to get to exactly what all of us did, that quiet serenity that I don't have to deal with, all the things like I understood were in the neighborhood when I lived on Noring Drive. You had Sparks Boulevard, Reed High School, the Ball Diamonds, you have all those things right there. And I understood that when I bought down there. And when I moved out there and built that house in nineteen ninety-seven, I understood that everyone else was gonna be plodding along about the same way I am, just doing a nice, having a nice, quiet life, living let live, and not be making a big production about all of this, whatever's going on. But these, bringing two-hundred-and-fifty people in to that neighborhood and tearing up that road, which I'm one of the guys that winds up on a backhoe down there fighting fixing the damn thing, like we did last, last winter on Culver. So there are just too many things that are going on, gonna create too much turmoil in the neighborhood for this whole thing. So, I hope you'll disapprove this.
Thank you. Mr. Pringle, and then Cheryl Glutfeltie, and I probably butchered it. I apologize. If you'll just come up front for me. Thank you. Go right ahead.
Hi, my name is Jerry Pringle. I live at fifty-three eighty Peralta Way, and thank all of you for hearing me tonight. I've got some real concerns. I'm a one-hundred percent disabled veteran, and I have to go down Dolores, and I like to take my wheelchair down and pick up my mail, at least pick up my mail. And last year, last summer, when they had these parties, they were campouts, as far as I'm concerned. They come up and down that street, and there's no sidewalks on that street. Has anybody thought to look in to see if the Americans with Disability Act is going to re- require sidewalks down that street? Kids go up and down, they ride their bikes. People just walking are in danger, are a little danger now. But most people that pass there live in the neighborhood, they know, they go by, they give you a little honk that they're passing you, you wave, everything's good. But last summer, and I don't care what they get up here and say, they were zooming up and down that road, like, uh, I was, I was afraid. I didn't go down that Saturday and get my mail. And I have to get my mail almost every day, 'cause I have medications coming from the Department of Veteran Affairs. And I couldn't go down that day, and I can see it happening every day. When they had those parties before, I could hear mariachi music at three o'clock in the morning. Now, I like mariachi music. I also like country and western music, but I don't like either one of them at three o'clock in the morning. I mean, come on, and this happened before. What's gonna keep them from doing that again? This, it is, just got me so concerned about this that I, I, I don't know what else to say. Please, please, do not ask this. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Okay, and if, Ms. Jeff Gilia, and I apologize, you guys all have difficult names tonight. So if you'll go ahead and come on up and sit up front. And you can correct me when you come to sit down, please.
Hi, my, hi, thank you for being here. My name is Cheryl Glutfeltie. I live at seven-five-three-five Star Hill. So we are immediately to the east of the property. And, um, I wrote a letter of opposition with many points that I don't have time to reiterate, so I just assumed that you read that. Thank you very much. I also wanna thank Mr. Crittenden, who really was a very good listener, and I think did incorporate a lot of neighbors' concerns in the conditional uses. However, I continue to just feel it should be declined. I also really like our neighbors. Thank you. Um, I really like to know the Madinas better, and I really respect what they're doing, and I agree that these are family things. I just don't think that this event belongs in this place. The applicant has a forty-acre parcel in Palomino Valley that seems entirely more suitable for this type of event. Um, and I just now wanna raise two concerns. Um, I went to the business address listed in the application. It is Vaquero's nightclub. So I have to think, I wonder who's selling alcohol? I have to think, is this, they say it's not-for-profit. Is there any way that this is ever going to be checked? I'm also really uncomfortable with the fact that alcohol is gonna be sold to two-hundred-and-fifty people right next to my house. I have to say, though, that my primary concern is noise. And I wanna use a minute of my time to just play you... Okay, I'll stop it before a minute. Um, so you kinda wanted it to be turned off. Well, imagine that, sort of twelve hours a day. And this has gone on two days in a row, not just one day, 'cause they play it during the setup in addition to the event itself. I don't see how it can be kept to sixty-five decibels. Sixty-five decibels is great. This is not sixty-five decibel event. There's two drums, two saxophones. This is what we're hearing. It is deafening. Um, we did, we received no notification of the first time they held one of these events. It was a day where we invited over a new friend to our house. We could hardly have a conversation with her. It is just, um, really threatening, actually, just that noise is so threatening to me. If they keep it to sixty-five, you know, great, but I think it just conflicts with the very point of the event, which is very celebratory. So I would just urge you to encourage the applicant to hold this event at another place. Thank you.
Thank you. Violet Richards, go ahead and, um, sit up front, please.
Jeff Gilia.
Thank you.
Seventy-three ninety Petrina Way. I'm actually three parcels down, if you look at that, from where they're at. And we were home last year when, I think it was Father's Day, they had their first event. And like she just played, that was my backyard, and I'm three parcels down. So the noise, and it went on and on, when the house still heard it, very, very loud. The dust is un- it's uncontrollable up there. Whether they run a water truck or not, they're not grading it, they, it gets washboard, they, they speed up and down the road. I've seen it, witnessed it. I'm highly against it, as my other neighbors have spoke, which I thought they all did a wonderful job. Everything that they've said, I wanna give out even more to it, that we're very much against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and then Dan Price, if you can sit up front for me, please. Oh, you're already up front. Perfect.
Violet Richards, fifty-two forty-five Dolores Drive. Um, there, everybody has kind of recapped what I wanted to say, and I want the council to know that we have no issue with the cultural part of it. It's just that we don't want it in our neighborhood. Dolores Drive is very narrow. On the weekends that this goes on, the music goes very late. We can all hear it, but the biggest safety concern I have is that these people are drinking already. They wanna sell booze there. I cannot ride my horse up that road for fear of not being taken out, or hike my dog, or let, you know, anything off of my gated property. Gondolfo Arena, I understand that they can't use that. That happens to be my Uncle Joe Gondolfo. And I think that this should happen for them. It just shouldn't happen in our neighborhood. It shouldn't happen a quarter of a mile away from my house. The bugs, the dust, the noise, it is miserable when it happens. They're saying two to two-hundred-and-fifty people, but according to what I think, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, they can have as many people as they want there with this use permit. They could double that. They could have five hundred. They could have seven-hundred-and-fifty. The amount of dust and the, um, way that it tears up our road is horrible. And I just hope that you deny this permit use. We all live out there for peace and quiet, and that's the way we wanna keep it. We don't, this seems commercial to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Price, and then, uh, Dan Flanagan, if you can go ahead and move up front for me? Oh, you're up front. Perfect. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Dan Price. I live at fifteen Mack Road. And we're probably about the furthest away from, you know, where this event is, uh, being done. And it's like the, it's right next door. It's so loud. I mean, in twelve hours a day, I mean, nonstop, I mean, over and over and over. It just drives you nuts. And, uh, I really have an issue with serving alcohol all day long, and like everybody's been saying, driving through the residential area to get to this event and to leave at the end of the day. It just doesn't make sense to me. I love, um, we've got horses, love rodeos, we go to them all the time, but, I mean, this isn't the area for it, you know? This is residential, you know, it's quiet, you know, you don't need this type of event there. You know, they, they said that, um, you know, they're gonna follow the rules and stuff, but obviously they haven't, 'cause sixty-five decibels, you heard everybody snicker when, you know, that was one of the conditions. And obviously, that didn't happen. I mean, you couldn't even talk, you know, being outside, like a few people have said. So, you know, for that reason, I'm against it. I just, I don't think it's safe, you know, as far as driving in and out in the morning. You know, they're leaving it late at night, you know? There's no, no enforcement, you know? You haven't seen a cop, you know, down the street, you know, when they're leaving or anything. So nobody's monitored it, like everybody's been saying, so I'm against it. So, thanks.
Thank you. Hey, Dan Flanagan, and then, I think, 'cause I'm having problems with the writing, Jane Grunseth. Thank you. Way off. I apologize.
Tough names.
Uh, yeah. I was tested. Thank you.
Mission members, Madam Chairman, Council, thank you for being here tonight. I'll try not to reiterate, obviously, the, the, some of the items that have been hammered in the ground already, and, um, I'll just agree with their interpretations of the noise. My name's Dan Flanagan. I live at seventy-seven seventy-nine. I am directly adjacent to the applicant's property. I've lived within a mile of this particular subject property for thirty-nine years. I've seen a lot happen out there from day one, been involved. I was on the original subcommittees with the development for Washoe County, uh, quite versed on the impact of many items that have come along in the years. We started out there, we had more gravel pits than we did schools and markets. Uh, so that, that has led to a very interesting, uh, issue that under, enters two-seven-eight, uh, oh-two-seven-eight-eight. It's this exertion of the sphere of influence of City of Sparks. Uh, the planning officials and the other officials, uh, the divisions that I've talked to regarding this, the best word I could come up with on this is called conundrum. When the, uh, City of Sparks, uh, applies these approvals and, uh, it's required Washoe County, and there's obviously a conflict in the, between the master plans, the rules and conditions, uh, the codes that are enforced in the county aren't similar to the, um, of course, with the City of Sparks. And, uh, and I'm sure you folks are aware of all that, that that's occurring. Uh, and I urge everybody, uh, in here, and obviously the commission members, that the regional planning revisions are coming up in spring of next year, so please get involved with that. Uh, that will, um, eliminate some of these issues that are happening. Uh, we've addressed the staff report, uh, the staff reports and the errors on the staff report. The one thing the staff report didn't address was the excessive use of the ATVs and motorcycles that's been on the property. They seem to be dominating the roads off and on the property. And, um, I have, I've talked to the applicant about that with really not a satisfactory response. Uh, Mr. Crittenden, uh, mentioned the county ordinance under A, it's a zoning requirement of A forty. Uh, that's a forty-acre minimum, uh, minimum requirement, which means this application, the bare minimum to apply for a major recreational facility has to be on a forty-acre parcel. There's an A forty zoning, and the applicant's property is only ten-point-six-five. So I'm curious of why the applicant, uh, was allowed to submit the application to begin with. And, and, and along with that, if, if that is the case, under the section, it's under section two-zero-zero-two-zero-three, and it's all the way through two-zero-zero-two-zero-one-three, uh, and there's numerous conditions and regulations in those provisions that, uh, uh, require height, size, distances, setbacks. Already, uh, the subject property's in violation of setback requirements. So I'm in opposition to this project, and, uh, I respectfully request you deny it. And, uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I guess I'm the last one tonight, huh? Make it short. You've heard a lot from the neighbors about all the concerns. A lot of these neighbors, I'm only two years to the, to the area. Uh, there's a few of us that only live here a couple of years, but I'd say over ninety percent of the people that live there have lived there twenty years. They, they know the area, they seen the development that hasn't gotten there, so they have to take care of it themselves. And, um, I totally respect what Lupi's doing. I don't think anybody in here is disrespecting what he wants to do. I think the main issue is just the location is not in the proper place. That's it. It's not, doesn't belong in a residential area, even though we have ten-acre parcels. It's residential. It's quiet, okay? We all take care of our property, we take care of the roads, and you heard all the concerns about the traffic. Across the street from where I live, I, I forgot to give my address, seventy-six hundred Marie Way.
Thank you. And if you can also put your...
Jarl Grunseth.
Thank you.
I live across the street from the B M, B M, B L M land. And Dolores is the only road to that land. Motorcycles, four-wheelers, horses, you name it. And that is twenty-four hours a day. They're up there in the middle of the night, and they speed past my house to and fro. And that concerns all the neighbors, because Dolores is the only road into that whole development. All these people live off one road, okay? So we gotta, we gotta look at the big picture, and we gotta look at the, how long these people have lived there. They've seen a lot of bad things happen because of the speed, the kids, the road, the four-wheelers, motorcycles, and all that stuff. But that's another world. But all I'm saying is, we respect everything that's going on here in this room. Everybody say what the Medina's are trying to do, but this just is not the right location for that type of thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, that's my last request to speak. Is there anybody that did not sign up that would like to come out, up and speak? Okay, you can, sir, and then if you'll just fill out a comment card when you're done.
Excuse me for...
Excuse me, for being so slow.
Oh, no worries. And if you'll just please state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Bill Richards, 5245 Dolores Drive. I've been there since 1982. And, and rebuttal to what was mentioned about our Honorable Mayor Gino Martini approving that Mexican rodeo at Gondolfo Arena. Cowboy Joe Gondolfo and I got together and we made a recommendation to the mayor at that time that they do not rope horses in the arena. They have a medical unit on the scene. Every rodeo I've been to, and I, I've been up there since the start of Gondolfo with Junior High School and Jim Cannon Rodeo. And I, I just think that's not, not the right place for that. Now, I think if they do have it, it should be required to have a medical and put a peace officer on the scene. Thank, thank you.
Thank you. If we can get you to fill out a comment card, that would be great. Yes, ma'am? Yes, please. You'll just state your name and your address, and then when you're done, please fill out a comment card.
My name's Deborah Walker, 7765 Marie Way. So, I own the parcel at the end of Dolores, which is a 20-acre parcel, as opposed to all the other parcels in that area are 10-acre parcels. So, four months ago, I came and met with the City of Sparks to ask if I could have that parcel subdivided into a 10-acre, or two 10-acre parcels, because everything out there is 10 or 11 acres. And I was told that for me to be able to do that, I would have to improve the road. So, I would have to pave the road to be able to subdivide my property into the same parcel size as everybody else out there. So, of course, it's not feasible for me to pay a million dollars to subdivide a parcel in half. So, that was shut down immediately. I was told to go when they do the regional plan and speak to, about that, about subdividing that parcel. But immediately, I would have had to improve the road. So, is this change of use gonna require that road to be paved? Because mine would be. And as far as the road, we pay. I mean, people say it's our road, we maintain it. We pay to maintain it. We have some owners up there that own heavy equipment that luckily, for our benefit, bring that in for the benefit of the neighbors. But the neighbors pay for base, the neighbors pay for the water truck, and the people have been providing the labor to do that on their own. But, we're not gonna do that when 250 vehicles are going up that road. It's, it's horrible as it is with just the neighborhood usage. So, that's a real huge concern, is the infrastructure aspect. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'll fill out a card?
Okay, I did fill one out.
Oh, you did?
I just say, I said not speak.
Oh, okay, that's fine, perfect. Anybody else? Yes, sir? Yes, you can come up and speak? If you'll state your name and your address and then fill out a card. If you'll go ahead and come down, you can go next.
I had previously called, well, not that I'm in a truck, I didn't want to speak, and I changed my mind.
Okay, that's fine.
My name's Rob Hooper, and I live at 5050 Dolores Drive, which the front of my property, or art of my family's property is from Star Hill to Patrina. So, all this passes in front. It's a wreck. There's a black Chevy pickup that went completely sideways all the way down that road. I didn't want to get up periodically because I'm just afraid I'd lose my mind. This is not, there's no safety here. We called the law last year, the law didn't show up because they were on other calls. I've spoken to law enforcement. There's one or two officers out there to patrol that whole area. There's a serious issue here. Do I think these people should be able to have one of these, maybe a year at their place? I honestly do. But one every month, no way. The rest of us aren't asking for things like that. I own a trucking company, I wanted to put a couple trucks there. I couldn't. When I was told no by Washoe County, I left. The trucks went to another location. I follow the laws, I don't try to change things, so my neighbors are mad at me. I don't have 40 people against me. I'm trying to follow what people have put out there where they want to live and respect the neighbors. Thank you. And I oppose.
My name's Dwayne Coder, I live at 7575 Patrina Way, pretty much right across the road from where the parcel is currently located. I can look right down into it from my porch. I was there for the last, the last two events of the year. And yes, there was music playing. Maybe because I've grown up and enjoyed and appreciated the culture involved that created the music, it didn't bother me at all. It wasn't as loud as portrayed by the lady who played the music on her cellphone. And quite honestly, I'm not sure how that can give you perspective as to how loud the event was. I can play loud music on my phone at full volume, I can play loud music on my phone at low volume. I don't really feel that accurately portrays the, the volume level of what was going on out there. Additionally, maybe because I'm pretty tolerant about noise or whatnot, it does not bother me that they want to play loud music during the day. If they played loud music at night, I'm gonna have a problem with that. But seeing as how these events are pretty much set up to be finished by sundown, that doesn't bother me. Dust and flies don't bother me. If dust and flies bothered me, I wouldn't have moved out to the country on a dirt road. I do understand the concerns about traffic. The road does get pretty beat up already. But if, if they're willing to fulfill their, their requirements and to contribute to the maintenance of that road, I don't have a problem with it. I understand there's children out playing on, 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 down on the properties that are further down towards, say, the paved part road and everything. I don't see why that should be a deterrent just as much as any other traffic that would be heading out there for the residents. Yes, there's gonna be an increase in traffic. Yes, the people driving need to be vigilant of what's out there just as much as the parents of those children need to be vigilant that there's going to be increased traffic on those six days out of the year. I think that's basically everything. I'm very happy that they want to have this, this cultural gathering six times a year. Six times a year. I would be no more bothered than if people on six different properties around me had a large birthday party or event for their, their family members or anything like that. Things, things are changing. And it's still, it's still a nice and quiet place to live, but I'm more than happy to give up six days a year for a wonderful event, something that's going to provide alternatives to people who may get into less than savory habits or environments, so I support it.
So, make sure that you fill out a, perfect, thank you. Okay, are we done? Please state your name and your address, and then fill out a card after you're done, please.
All right, my name's Rock Cole, I live at 7410 Marie Way. I wasn't gonna talk because I've been to these meetings, and quite frankly, I think usually the wheel's been greased and just a formality to let us even speak. Lately, I was at one and you allow at 1800 homes to be built up on the ridge right above our house, that we were promised was a protected ridge when we bought General Rural in Washoe County. And with a swipe of a pen, now it's City of Sparks. I guess my question to you would be, if all of a sudden you guys found out you had an arena moved in right next to your home, and you were gonna be hearing and smelling and seeing the dust, would you guys be for that? Put yourself in our situation. We've been getting some stuff crammed down our throat lately. Except for you, Scott, you were the only one that opposed that project, I thank you for that. It's not the place to have this. Last year, I sleep with my windows open. Last year at 3:00 AM, I had to close my windows because of their music. And I am probably a half a mile away. So, I don't care what this last guy said. It's loud, and it's ridiculous. And if you lived right next to it, like some of these poor people do, these guys can't even watch TV without turning it way up. It's ridiculous. Put yourself in their situation. It's just, it's not fair, I guess. It's not fair. That's the bottom line. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you'll fill out a comment card, please? Okay. Yes, please? Well, and if you'll just...
My name is Diane Parjon, I'm at 5675 Dolores Drive. I am in the first block of Dolores. And everybody wants to say it doesn't impact the paved area, it impacts the paved area. It is a main artery. Not only do people have to come up Dolores because there is a, a medium, so they have to come up Dolores, do a U-turn, go back down Dolores to go into town from the residential areas that are on this other side of library, by the library. So, we get impacted by a lot of traffic in that intersection of Pyramid and Dolores. So, for them, for them to say that we do not get impacted in the paved area, we do get impacted by it. We get a lot of traffic. It's very fast up and down that street. We, and there's no sidewalks. I, I'm fearful of taking my granddaughter for a walk because the cars are speeding up and down that thing, and in the evening, the sun's right in your eyes. So, I just wanted to say, it does impact the paved area also. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'll fill out a comment card, okay, with that, our... Okay, if you'll state your name and your address, and then also fill out a card. And if you can come down to the front, thank you.
My name is Carmelita Halftum, I live at 5645 Dolores, three doors down from Diane. My husband and I stood outside all afternoon during the last event. And going like this to people speeding up the street with their trailers. And most of the time, we get flipped off. It's not the place. It's not the place. We have enough traffic, we have enough, I guess we're gonna have to wait till somebody else gets killed going up that street. And we know that a couple people have gotten killed at the, where it is unpaved from going too fast. And we're against it. It does impact the whole area. You wouldn't want it in your backyard.
Yeah, please fill out a car, comment card for us, thank you.
Dana DePalo, 7895 Patrina Way. My husband and I, we live about 1,000 feet away. The music did not go till 3:00 in the morning. The music did not go till 3:00 in the morning. The music probably went till about 11:30, basically done at that point. And there's a lot of horses around that area. I have several horses. My neighbors to the east of me have horses. There's a lot, there's two stables that I know of that are right off Dolores. One is called Jackass Ranch, actually. And there's a lot of horse trailers that go in and out all the time. A lot of horses that ride up and down the road. It didn't bother us at all. I'm able to eat outside my deck. I don't have a problem with flies. We enjoyed it. Loopy invited us over, we've been there. What I would say is, I think that you should visit the property. That's what I think you guys should do. I think you should visit the property, drive up it, drive up Dolores, and look for it yourself instead of going by what... We could do this all day. I think you guys should take a drive out there and look at it for yourself. Then you know, then you can make a good decision, the right decision at that point. I am for it. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'll fill out a comment card?
My name's Wendy Stillwell, 6950 Dolores Drive. I do have a sable, it's private. Only I have horses there. I have a donkey. That's it. I am impacted by everything everybody has said tonight. The traffic is bad. I'm scared to ride on the road, I'm scared to walk, my dog's down there. Everything in our neighborhood is quiet, rural, peaceful, gorgeous. Not on an event night. I can sit on my porch and hear that music 24/7. We all can. Bill and Violet live across the street from me. It's very private, it's very rural, it's very residential. We love our homes. We don't need any more increased activity up there. Bad enough that we've got ATVs and all these extra cars going up that street. I've lived there 31 years, and this does change our life out there. Respectfully, please consider opposing. Please. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'll fill out a comment card for us?
I have one, but I just didn't...
Oh, you just didn't, okay, all right.
It's been a long evening for you guys, I apologize. My name is Linda Collins Pringle, I live at 5380 Peralta, which is 20 acres or 10 acres off Dolores. My fear of me driving off Pyramid onto Dolores with all the houses that are there back to back is frightening. You have to go extra slow, I go about 10 miles because I never know which person is going to either start backing up. They have to drive, park in their driveway in order to live in their house. There's no parking on the street for them. And little kids are growing up there, and it just takes one to run out and get killed. And I have many grandchildren, great-grandchildren, and that would devastate me. So, I would have, agree that each of you should drive down Dolores all the way up to the end of Marie before you make a decision. And that's what I wanted to say, because that is dangerous. That first section coming off Pyramid is a nightmare. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right. Anyone else? Okay, with that, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and I'm gonna bring it back to the commission for questions. So, okay. And what I may do is, I think I'm gonna start with Commissioner Shabash, do you have any? I'm gonna work down through.
Yes, Madam Chair, I did have a couple questions. It actually was for the applicant.
Okay.
Would the applicant be able to approach?
Yes. Applicant, if you can, please come up.
Sir, thank you for being here today. And I know, it sounds like you've got a tight-knit community, and it can be a, this kind of forum can be a difficult thing, and I know you all work well to keep, keep that neighborhood as tight and make everyone feel welcome. I had a couple questions for you, sir. The first one was, when are you planning to do your first event?
Well, the original plan was to start in on May.
Right.
And go once a month, so it's gonna be six months down the road. So, October will be the last one.
So, at this moment, right now, you're planning on Cinco de Mayo to be your first event?
Obviously, we're, we're not on time for that, we're late. I, it could be, the first one will be on next month, June.
Next month, okay.
So...
And you had mentioned that you're, that you, that you had made many of the improvements already. I, I see quite a few things that you have to, that you would have to abide by as a, as a, as a part of this conditional permit. Which, which is fairly expensive to comply with. Can you, have you worked out that, that dollar value as to how you're going to do those things?
Well, first of all, I was waiting for this event, and then kinda... Well, first of all, I was waiting for this event and then kinda double-check all the requirements and see what I have to do to be able to get this permit and then go from there.
Because I do see here where you're saying that you will comply 100%.
Yes.
But you're telling me that you're, you'll comply 100% before you know what all, all of the things are that you have to do?
Yeah, whatever it takes, um, I'll work hard to, to make it happen, you know? I mean, I'm, I'm here to follow all you guys' requirements and do my best to make it, you know, make it, make it through. So, I mean, if there's something that I cannot afford it, then, then I'll be, you know, we'll be talking about something different. But as of right now, I don't, I don't see any problems by, you know, meeting all the, your, you know, requirements so far.
And your concessions, is that simply to defer those costs? Or is there any piece of that? Have you worked out that? Is there any piece of those concessions that you're going to be selling that will go outside the cost of the event?
I don't know if I get that one.
So the money that you will be charging for alcohol or food?
Okay.
Is any of that going to go to anything else other than the cost of maintaining your, or coming into compliance with these things?
All the, all the sales, all the incomings will be used for that, yes. Whatever expenses we can cover with our incomes, that's what we get, that's what we use the money for. Every single penny. Yeah.
Madam Chair, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Peterson.
Commissioner Peterson, uh, sir, can you tell me, uh, how many horses you own?
How many horses do I own? Four.
Four?
Four horses, yes.
And, uh, are all four of your horses compete in these events?
No, this, okay, this is not a competition. This is just a, a show. So, yeah, um, out of the four horses that I...
But there is roping involved, isn't there not?
Yes, two of them do.
Now, your own horses do roping and show?
Two of them.
Two, two of them?
Yes.
I understand that you put this on in years before.
Right.
And I've also, from reading some of these comments, that I find out that there have been, several of your neighbors have attended these. Do they have horses?
Yes.
And do they compete in this?
They participate, yes.
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry. I, you said it's not a competition. That's fine. The other thing that I have to ask then, how many other participants do you expect?
Participants, we're talking about approximately 20 per event.
20?
20 participants, 20, 25, somewhere in there.
20. And, and all of these participants must, uh, trailer their horses in? Is that not true?
That's correct.
The other thing is, you happened to mention, I saw somewhere in your notes, that you will hire the steers.
We rent the steers, yes.
They have to be trucked in. Is that not right?
That's correct.
Thank you, sir. That's all I have.
Commissioner Peterson, you're done?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Reed.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to ask a couple of questions about the prior events. From what the neighbors were saying, there's been two prior events at this location.
As yours, yes.
None before that at this location, just the two that were last year?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, prior to that, were you affiliated with other organizations? And did the event at other locations?
Yes, we did. Put up a couple of events about five years ago at Gandalf Arena.
Right.
And we couldn't afford it anymore because it was too expensive to keep doing it for once. And then I believe that Gandalf Arena has been listened to renovation organization. So we're not allowed to put up these events up there anymore.
So you're saying that the reason that you are no longer doing the events with Gandafi and other associations is because it became too expensive?
Well, part of that, yes.
What was the other part?
That, uh, we understand that Gandalf Arena has been listened to, um, renovation organization and they're already booked up. They don't, they don't rent the arena anymore to just out, uh, any other organization. That's what I heard.
Is, um, is your event open to the public or is it just people that are invited?
Okay, so, um, I can say yes, it's, it's open to the public. 90%, if, if it's not more, the people that can't, uh, peer to the event, they go to the Medina's family event. So that means we know more, they know the Medina's family, um, for years. And this, and they know that this is what we do. And so it's, it's open to public, but 90% of the spectators and participants, they're family and close friends that we know, yeah.
How many people attended the, um, prior events?
The first event, we have seven, about 75, 85. The last event was like 100.
And where did the people that attended those events park?
Inside our property. We designated on the side plan a parking lot for them. Every single car is inside the, the property fence all the way around.
So nobody parked outside around the property? What about the horse trailers? Are they...
They have their own, uh, livestock, uh, parking lot inside the property. For, the last event, it was one horse trailer parking by the street. The property fence is about 20 or 15 feet from the edge of the road. So we have that space. And what, there was one horse trailer parking there for 15 minutes. There was one participant that seen it. He was coming from another event and then he had no time to get in and out. So that was for 15 minutes. He got out there, spent 15 minutes, got back on the trailer, on, on the truck and take off. That was the only one that was parking outside the, uh, the property. But it was, it was not parking on the road. Between the road and the parking, uh, the property fence, which is 15 foot.
So everybody that attended the event, except for those two exceptions, parked inside the property?
Yes.
Do you, is this free or do you charge admission? I know that you've got costs that you've gotta cover for the event.
We accept donations at the entrance.
Donations, okay.
And they all know what is that for and they know, they understand what are attended for these events. And they all, they all know that we have expenses that we have got to cover. And they all know that they, yeah, so we accept donations at the en, at the entrance.
And how many people typically help out? Or do you employ people to help out at the event? Or is it all volunteers and how many?
We group up and then they're all volunteers. We have, um, um, security guards that are licensed, security guard that are working somewhere else. And they're volunteers on our crew. All the participants are volunteer. Every, everyone that helps us cleaning up, taking care of the event, we all volunteers.
Are you aware of some of the complaints such as the loud music and the ATVs going up and down the road? I mean, have you, have you witnessed the, the ATVs driving up and down during the event? And the, um, quads? And I don't remember if somebody said motorcycles and that are going really fast. Have you witnessed that?
Uh, the only traffic that we getting on the events is the people that are hauling their livestock, which is a pickup with two or three horse trailers. They can, there's no way they can drive that fast on the dirt road because they love their horses and they wanna be safe. There was only one quad that one of my security guy was using and that's my own quad that, that we keep on the property. We don't allow any motorcycles or anything on the events whatsoever. So, people going up and down on the events? Yes, they are because we start at noon and we end at sunset. So the participants, some of them start from, at noon, ends at 2:00 and then they take off. And then we, we got more people coming to participate from 2:30 to 4:30 and then take off. So they are up and down from, uh, 11:00 AM to sunset, you know, um, at that date only. About the music, we, the event ends at sunset, period. There's no loud music. It could be last, the last event, we have one of the, um, I think it was one that the, or a couple of guys that are helping us cleaning up. And they turn their own car radio music. Once the live music was done and the amplifier was done, the system was off, turned off. And they kept listening to that radio when they were cleaning up. That was the only music that went beyond sunset on the last event.
And I have one more question. Thanks for answering the questions. When do you typically start setting up for this event? And how long does it take to tear down for the events?
Okay, setting up, we, we don't have that much of a setting up. We only have two, um, tent houses, like six by six where we keep our beverage, you know, cold. That's about the only setup that we have on the event. Nothing else. We have the food, there is a food truck that just drive in and take off. They take everything with them. So there's no setup.
And so when the event ends at sunset, everybody is gone by then? Are you, how long does it take to tear down?
When the, uh, the event is over, uh, 90% of the, uh, participant and spectators are, after, after the sunset, 30 minutes after sunset, 90, 90% of them are gone. The other 10% are, uh, the people who helping me with, you know, cleaning up and, you know, making sure all the animals are out of the property and blah, blah, blah. But then, um, that's, that's like 45 minutes after sunset and then everybody's out of there.
Hey, I have to ask one more question based on what you were asked, uh, saying. So is there, if there's people there after sunset, is there outdoor lighting?
No.
Set up, none? Okay.
I don't, no, I, I'm totally against the lighting because of my horses. And, and yes, I want, I want the property to keep as it is right now. We don't know. I'm totally against lighting.
Okay. Thank you for answering all those questions.
Commissioner Fions, do you have any questions?
Uh, just one question. Uh, thank you for coming. Uh, Mr. Dean, what is the fence that you have on the east side of your property on the 10 acres? What kind of fence is it? Bob wire? Uh, the kind of fence?
The fence?
The fence on the, uh, east side of your property?
Uh, it's just a, a T-post with, um, those wires with no, smooth wires.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brock, do you have any questions?
No, I do not. Commissioner Reed pretty much hit the ones I was gonna...
Perfect. Commissioner Carey.
I don't have any questions for the, for the applicant. I have a couple of questions for staff.
So do I.
Okay, perfect. Okay. If you'll continue to make yourself available, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Commissioner Carey for, for the record. Ian, I had, I had, um, a couple of questions, kind of in two primary, primary areas. Public safety and then I have some questions about land use. As a follow-up to my question at the, at the, at our study session, were you able to find any information about any citations or response calls from the sheriff's office or noise complaints from Washoe County?
Um, I was able to get ahold of Washoe County Code Enforcement and ask them about, uh, any responses or any complaints associated with events last year. And they did not have any recorded responses that, I was not able to get information from the county sheriff.
Thank you. I had a question, um, about our automatic, our new automatic aid agreement between the city and Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District. I was curious if the automatic aid agreement has, changes any of the conditions of approval or... Because it's my understanding in the agreement, it's the closest unit that responds. I didn't know if that, with Truckee Meadows, I'll rephrase my question. Does Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District still have primary response and would be in charge of those conditions? Would the city have any?
The, uh, Washoe County or Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District would be the primary responder, primary responsibility here. They are the, uh, the agency that we talked with, um, as we reviewed this, this proposal. They do still have, uh, that is still their primary responsibility.
And then my last public safety question was about, um, emergency response and RIMSA. It's my understanding with other, um, special events that are issued in other jurisdictions, there's typically a condition of approval requiring, um, an EMS service to be on site. Did you receive any comments from, from RIMSA? I believe they have a special events division that, that handles large events. Didn't know if that met the qualifications.
No, I, we did not receive response from, uh, from RIMSA. Uh, although the requirement for them to have one is a potential possibility that, uh, the planning commission could look into.
Okay.
But yeah, we deny your response from them.
And then I'll just get through my land use, um, questions as, as, as fast as I can. Appreciate the indulgence, Madam Chair.
No problem.
I was, so with the, with the exhibit that was in our staff report for the, for the site, for the property map, um, I was curious. And you said that it didn't really have any meaningful impact on the, on the analysis. So if we're looking at the property that's to the south of what was highlighted, it looks like the land uses on the site are, are, um, LLR and open space. One of the findings that, and discussion that you have in the staff report is that to the north, um, previously, the, the planned land use was, um, gosh, what was it? It was rural, single-family residential. My question is, is with, uh, the property to the north, if it has an intermediate density residential land use, is that still considered a rural, single-family land use?
So, uh, oh, I'm sorry about that. So the, uh, the, the, the map that I had wrong, the, the wrong property highlighted, is the, I had the high, the property just to the north of the subject property highlighted. And it had three districts on it. That's the LDR, the LLR, and the OS. Those are all larger-lotted, uh, low-density residential zoning districts. When in the analysis, we talk about the, the, the land use in that, that comparison, a lot of times what we're talking about is actual use of the land, not necessarily the, uh, the master plan land use. You know, we kind of addressed that in finding one that the land use is, is compliant with the expected use or the proposed use. When we're talking this second, and we're really talking about what, what's happening on those properties. And those properties, it doesn't change the fact that they are still all single-family on rural, large-lot rural properties. There is no IDR directly adjacent to this site. If there is IDR, it would be up north in Sonoma Highlands and, and this doesn't border that. So, does that answer your question?
It does, thank you, Ian. And this will be my last land use question. In your analysis, in the staff's analysis, um, how does this proposed conditional use permit advance the land use plan for this area that the city has? And how does it meet the comprehensive, um, plan policies?
So the two comprehensive plan policies that we, we felt it helps... So, the two comprehensive plan policies that we, we felt it helps support were, let me look it up here in my notes. Goal MG2, which is, talks about adding diversity to our land use mix, uh, and specifically calls out recreational uses as one of those uses that we're looking to add to the land use mix, um, as this is a recreational use. We felt they'd help support that, um, goal. And then policy RC24 was, talks about supporting cultural resources. We felt that this was a cultural resources that would be supported through approval.
Just a quick follow-up. So, it's staff's interpretation that cultural resources are special events?
Not special events, but the, the nature of the special event, which was specifically requested, was a roping and dancing horse cultural event, um, which qualified under the, uh, major recreational facility definition in the code. That's where we, we made that association.
Thank you, staff. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Peterson?
Ian, it's been a long time since I, a few years back, hadn't traveled to Dolores quite often. But it's been a few years back since I have. Do you happen to know the width of Dolores?
I don't know the width of Dolores off the top of my head. Um, shoot, I, I was looking at the parcel map for out there, and it, there is a, an easement described, and, and I don't know what it is off the top of my head. I'm sorry.
I somewhat remembers a very narrow, narrow road.
So, Commissioner Peterson, for the record, John Martini.
Excuse me. Can Mr. Martini speak? Thank you.
Community Services Director, there, there's a couple of widths that staff found on Dolores Drive. So, the paved portion in what is the subdivisions of typical size, uh, I believe is about 50 feet. And then as you transition, uh, and that's the width of the rightway. What's actually paved, in my opinion, is probably more like about 36 feet. It's, it, it is a narrow residential street of a design that was used back in that time. Um, and I understand the concerns, at that time, the county didn't require sidewalks. If you go out there, it is, is, it is a narrow paved road with drainage on either side. It is fairly narrow. When we researched the land maps that are the western portion of Dolores, uh, so this, this area was created a long time ago by a division of land into large parcels, is what it appears to me. And there have been many subsequent parcel maps that get us to the parcels you see today. What I found of, of note was there, the portion basically from where the pavement ends up, the dirt portion, appears on the maps as a 60-foot easement that was required by court decree. Now, the documents of that court decree are very old and they're not online. Staff was not able to get them. We would have to request those court documents from the county recorder. Um, they probably have to be pulled out of archive at this point. We didn't have time to, to look into the nature of whether this is truly a private road, if the court decreed public access, selective access. It, we don't know at this point.
I would just strictly remember it, that when I had to take it at that time, it seemed to me that it would be very difficult to, to, for two horse trailers to pass each other. But like I say, it's been a few years since I've been up in there. And that's all I was requiring is, is that, that if anybody really knew the width, I do feel for the handicap person and not having sidewalks and, and the route that he has to take. And I hope in the future that will be looked into. But you answered my question very well done. I have one more, more of a comment than it is a question, but I wanted to clear since at a very early age, I was born and raised one half a block across from the rodeo grounds, which was then where the county administration offices are now, is all wall-to-wall, row after row of single horse stalls. I first learned to ride over there at an early age. And what I'm driving at, and I also attended a lot of events over there at an early age, I learned to love my horses over there at an early age. But there's a whale of a lot of difference between riding stables and events put on, because most of the events that put on, the stock has to be trucked in. On riding stables, they are residents of that area. And therefore, the riding stables, they ride their horses out on the trails, are around, so on and so forth. So, I just want to make that point clear that I find that there's a whale of a lot of difference between, uh, riding stables and events, especially steer roping and stuff like that. So, uh, thank you, and, and I appreciate your input on that.
Madam Chair, I just had one.
Commissioner Schloss?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Um, I, I would like you to clarify for us. It was brought up in one of the comments. I can't remember the gentleman that was, uh, that presented it. But he did posit that there is a 40-acre requirement for these large, uh, this, this type of a permit. Uh, can you clarify for us whether that can be done on a 10-acre lot, or if that is indeed a requirement that there be a 40-acre lot?
So, a, a parcel zoned A40 is typically required to be 40 acres. I mean, that is part of the, the, the definition of an A40 lot. However, when we're, uh, talking about older lots and, and essentially that's a, not a, not a new designation, but it's, it's current incarnation is, is new. We've updated zoning codes over time, and those designations have changed. And so, we have a lot of lots throughout the city that have a zoning designation that they don't necessarily fit. Um, a good example is SF6 parcels, it's supposed to be 6,000 square foot. In a lot of old neighborhoods, you might have a lot of 5,000 square foot lots. But that's a consequence of a lot of different things changing over the years. In a case like this, what we would say is that this parcel is substandard. Um, anytime you have a, a, a parcel that, for whatever reason, was, was developed legally but does not current, meet the current zoning standards, they're substandard or substandard development. Substandard developments are, are granted the same rights any, any property meeting those standards is, except that any development or, or, or things that happen there have to meet the current requirements. So, um, an example would be if, if your house didn't meet current setbacks, but we can show that you've created, received a permit to build your house where it is, that, that house is fine at that location. You can't increase that substandard development. You couldn't build closer to the property line you're already too close to. Um, if the example of a conditional use permit on a parcel, that, conditional uses are permitted uses, subject to a conditional use permit. So, so that use is already allowed on the parcel, subject to review that it can, it can be conditioned in such a way that it's compatible with adjacent uses. So, um, while I, while I understand the, the concept of, hey, it doesn't meet the current zoning, so you can't, can't do anything, that, that's not the way we operate. If, if you don't meet it, but that, that lack of meeting makes you just substandard, doesn't necessarily make you, uh, you know, unable to do anything on that property.
So, in, in essence, we can say it was grandfathered as?
Grandfather is a very loose and generic term, but yes, it is grandfathered and able to operate.
I'm a simple guy.
But, yeah.
Okay.
Madam Chair, Allison McCormick for the record.
Yes, thank you.
If I could add to that.
Please.
This use would also be allowed in an A5 zoning district, which would be a five-acre minimum lot size by conditional use permit. So, the exact same process that the commission is going through right now.
Thank you.
Or, excuse me, I should say, a major recreational facility would be allowed in an A5 zoning district.
Thank you.
By conditional use permit.
Thank you. Do the commissioners have any other questions?
Okay, I have my list now. So, Mr. Medina, if you could please step back up. Thank you, Ian. Thank you, and I appreciate it. Um, the last two events that you had, when Commissioner Reed had asked you, one of the events you had about 75 people, and the other event you had about 100. Okay, how many horse trailers did you bring in, average for those two events?
Average? So, we got like, the average is like three horses per trailer. And you didn't ask me about the, uh, people, but the average riding on a, a car is four people.
Okay.
You know, per car that appears to this, these events.
Okay, so, did you have 75 cars in addition to the horse trailers? Or what's an estimate of how many cars and horse trailers did you have at the event that you had 75 people?
When we have 75 people, I'm talking about, uh, 25 to 30 cars.
Okay.
And probably average of 10 horse trailers.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And it's my understanding that Dolores Way down where your property is, is on a private road maintenance agreement? So, that means that all of the people that live in that area, they all put in to make sure that the road is up to standards where everybody can drive back and forth on it, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, at the time, please don't interrupt. Thank you. So, when you did these events, did you check around with your neighbors? Or did you make any, um, did you, because of the fact that the event used it and probably wrecked up the road, did you make any concessions to your neighbors to correct any things that maybe would have damaged the road during those events?
The last couple of events, um, I didn't notice, um, any outstanding damage to the, to the road. And why I'm saying this is because every event after the event's over, I personally walk all the way to the paved road and pick up every piece of trash that is left there, even if it's old trash or whatever. I pick everything up myself. I have my team that are helping me do other stuff, but cleaning up the road, I do it myself. I want to double check that it's been right, uh, done the, the right way. So, I noticed there's no outstanding, um, damage to the road. However, we've been putting our money to main, maintain the road when we've been asked for it. And I'm willing to put from now on that the impact, I know, I understand the impact is gonna be more this year than the last year, because we've spoken more people, because the type of, uh, permit that I kind of enforced to apply for, which is different from the last year. So, we expect more, more traffic. And I understand it's gonna be, it is gonna be damage to the road. So, from now on, if I had to double up my money on maintenance, or triple up my money that I'm, or have been putting down on the last three years, I'm willing to do that.
Okay. And then, um, someone had spoken that you've applied, uh, to do this event at two other, um, pavilions, and you've been denied?
No, that's, that's not, that's.
Okay, where have you applied to do this? Uh, have you applied to do this event before you decided to do the special use permit?
I applied to do this event at Gandalf Arena about five years ago, when we put down two events on Gandalf Arena. And then I applied to do just a dancing horse show at Baccarat's nightclub parking lot. And I did get the permit, the special use permit four times, and we done the event. So, I haven't denied none of my application for this special use permit.
Okay, and I apologize. It's a conditional use permit. Okay, have you made any attempts to, um, try to do this event at other pavilions like Ironwood or something like that?
No.
Okay, all right. With that, I have no further questions. Thank you. Commissioners, anybody else have any other questions?
Commissioner Pughans, I had some for staff. See, and hop back up here, just to get that leg workout for the night. Commissioner Pughans, Ian, one of the conditions you're saying is, is about the road improvements and different things. Does the city have any kind of jurisdiction on private easement road, roads on, uh, because it is a condition, and it says on 17 road maintenance and repair city and county. But, uh, once you get past the, and I did drive up and did look at Dolores Lane and did drive around the property. I think it was trash day today, because the trash truck was out in, in the middle of the road, and I couldn't get around it. And, so on, when it goes to, uh, the private road, and there's a sign that says private road, what jurisdiction does the city have on a private road?
So, we don't have any jurisdiction, um, on that road per se. But what we do have is the ability to condition this, this request to require the applicant to, to enter into an agreement that the county and city can, can then get a copy of that shows that they have entered into an agreement of their, that shows what their share or their burden for, for road maintenance and repair is. So, it's not necessarily that we have jurisdiction over the road, but as this is our, our, the, the city's permit to grant, we, we can condition it that they, they show some level of maintenance to that road, and there's an agreement that's agreed upon of, of what that should be.
Okay. And I did ask a question to the applicant earlier about the fence on the west side, or the east side of the property, excuse me. Typically, the wind in the afternoon blows from the west, uh, to the east. And I know you did put a stipulation about garbage and, uh, different garbage containers and different things. Um, could there be a way to condition the east side of the property to have more of a, like a chain link fence that would keep the, uh, refuge inside of the property instead of blowing down to, um, the neighbors on the east?
Absolutely. Um, so, um, having, uh, this is our monitor and also City Community Services Director. Um, having had that, uh, concern raised at the study session, uh, we have taken the liberty of preparing a, uh, potential, uh, condition. Uh, I will go ahead and provide that to you, and then I will read it into the record for your consideration. It could be modified however you, uh, see fit.
Thank you, and Ian, one last question. Um, a temporary use permit that has been granted in the past for this event, the last two times that it's happened, is there, uh, when a temporary use permit is granted, are there noise decibels requirements on those?
Uh, I don't believe that that was a condition of either of the previous temporary use permits.
Thank you.
Commissioner Peterson?
Commissioner Peterson, Ian, it's not my fault. You gotta blame him for calling you back. Um, I have one further, uh, follow-up question. It just dawned on me. We have put a lot of conditions on this applicant, and, uh, some of them would need some kind of oversight to see that they're fulfilled. We have not that means, do we?
Can you give me an example of, of which one you're talking about?
Well, for instance, we say the road should be watered soft and then gravelled in certain places, and those parking lots are. So, the event takes place, say it's approved and the event takes place, how do we police these things to make sure that they're done? We don't have that means, do we?
Uh, so, parts of that are, are things that we can inspect, uh, as in the, uh, the, the requirement for gravel in the parking lot, you know, that's something we could go out and inspect and verify that it's done. Um, and then we could go out, uh, intermittently throughout the year to, to, to check that it's being maintained at the level that's required. Um, as far as, is dust on the road, like you said, that is harder to track, but that is a requirement of the Washoe County Health District's Air Quality Management Dis, Department? To, they do require that that's done, and, and they do have, uh, a monitoring protocol to go out and, and verify those things have been done. Um, unfortunately, most of, uh, you know, these, these kind of conditions are, uh, a complaint-based, uh, thing for, for monitoring. Um, like you said, city staff, and even the county staff and both of us together don't have enough time or, or manpower to, to watch everything. And so, we do, um, we do operate on a complaint basis. And so, uh, if complaints are made that that's happened, then, then extra eyes come out to look at and verify that, that things are happening as they're out.
And then, uh, there's, was one other follow-up I had on, on, on. And then, uh, there's, uh, was one other follow-up I had on, on, on the fact that, uh, the, uh, conditions that we, that, that are, have been placed on there, we're missing one, should this application be granted, should we approve it? I think that, that we should have a condition on there that it is subject to annual review by this commission.
So, uh, Commissioner Peterson, this is Armando Nellis, Assistant Community Services Director. Again, that was an issue that was, uh, raised, uh, at the study session. We have given that some consideration. It, it is outside, I will say that it is outside the way or the, the manner or frankly, the intention of how a conditional use permit is intended to, um, to, to work. In the sense that, uh, it's intended to allow for use, uh, once established, uh, to continue so long as it, uh, the conditions of approval are being satisfied. Uh, which suggests that, um, you know, in the event that the conditions of approval were not being satisfied, then, um, you know, we would have to go through the, the process of revoking the conditional use permit. We haven't, um, since we've gone to, you know, made the transition from special use permit process to the conditional use permit process, added a condition along those lines, uh, that's something to say can't be done, but it would be, um, o- out of the ordinary certainly and.
Sir Nellis, can you speak into the mic?
Sure.
Because the audience can't hear you, thank you.
It would be, it would be out, it would be, um, it, it's frankly inconsistent with the, the, uh, the way a conditional use permit is approved and, and, uh, you know, is intended to run where the property as long as the conditions of approval are satisfied. That's something to say it couldn't be done.
Alright, well, we'll cross that bridge when it happens, I suppose, alright, thank you very much.
Hey, Commissioner Carey?
Sure, if there's no other questions from, from the commission, I, I'll throw it out there for, for, for discussion. Um, certainly appreciate the, um, the work of our staff and our friends at Washi- Washoe County planning for all their work and trying to make this project work with, with conditions of approval. This is a very tough project, it's very confusing, I think, uh, with the whole sphere of influence issue. I think, um, one, one issue I personally have, I'm not sure how my colleagues on this commission feel, but it's a little weird and it's kind, and it's uncomfortable to be voting for, um, as a Sparks Planning Commissioner, voting for a city-issued condition of, conditional use permit in, in the county and that would be maintained and monitored by, by the county. With, with that being said, there was a lot of discussion tonight, um, a lot of, a lot of comments, appreciate the comments, appreciate the emails and, and calls. But I, I view this as a strictly a land use issue. My understanding of the protocol agreement is that, you know, we, that the city, this is an area that the city has identified that we would grow into and we wanna have input on the land uses and planned land uses in that area. Um, I'm gonna have to respectfully disagree with staff recommendation and analysis. To me, it, it's kinda tough to meet, um, finding C1. Certainly appreciate, and that's compatibility with our comprehensive plan and, and, and the land uses. The pol- the, the one that I have issue with is policy RC24. And that's to promote the protection of and minimize potential impacts on cultural resources within the city's jurisdiction. Cultural resources as defined by federal, state, and the Sparks Municipal Code are, are building sites and other tangible areas that are deemed historic and that are, that meets four specific criteria outlined by the Secretary of Interior. Um, cultural resources are not special events and they're, they're not cultural programming. So I, I don't, I think that that's an incorrect and not consistent application of, of that policy. And I, I'm not able to meet finding C1. I, to me, RC24, the intent of that policy is to protect and enhance our cultural resources within the city. I, I fail to see how the proposed project will advance cultural resources cause this, cause under federal, state, and, and local law, these are not cultural resources. I'm also, you know, that, I'll just wrap it up, but I have some trouble with, with also C1. I don't see how the con- conditional use permit is compatible with the planned land uses and helps meet our goals of the comprehensive plan and the policies we have for this area. It's my understanding that this was an area that we chose to grow into. I feel that this proposed conditional use permit is, is incompatible with, with our land use plans and our, and our comprehensive plan goals. I think major recreation areas, especially in residential areas and within our, in, in, in the city and in our sphere of influence, need to be compatible and they need to advance our comprehensive plan. I don't believe that the proposed project advances our comprehensive plan or our land use goals.
Thank you, Commissioner Carey. Any other commissioners have any comments?
I have a comment.
Commissioner Peterson?
Mr. Commissioner Carey, it stole all my thunder. I, uh, originally when I was discussing this with, uh, somebody who cared about this matter very much, I told her, I said, I don't think I'll have much to say because the commissioners on this committee with me are very, very sharp people and they cover all angles. And, uh, it's proved right, but I can't support this. I must say, because for exactly what Mr. Carey said, it is not compatible in my mind. Anytime you get a posent audience of four to one, it is not a compatible situation as far as I'm concerned. And so I, for that reason, I will not be able to support this.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes, thank you, um, I concur with my fellow commissioners, Commissioner Carey, Commissioner Peterson. I appreciate the, your comments. I also cannot support this, um, conditional permit based on some of the comments that have already been made. So, with that said.
Mr. Shabazz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do wholeheartedly, uh, agree with the assessment, well, not the hun- not a hundred percent of the assessment, but the, uh, the part where it meets the goals of what we're, what we're setting out. My major concern here is how the applicant will meet the requirements. The requirements that we set forth here are gargantuan. And I don't, uh, for that reason, I will have, I, I have difficulty supporting this. Uh, because I just don't see how the applicant or any, you know, any, uh, anyone that is not a large organization can meet all of these requirements a hundred percent and, uh, keep the, and keep the peace in, in this neighborhood. So for that reason, and that reason alone, um, I won't be able to support it.
Commissioner Shabazz, uh, any other comments?
Madam Chair? If I may, sorry. Allison McCormick, for the record, if Commissioner Shabazz could elaborate on which, uh, of the five findings he believes that his comments go to?
Absolutely, um, so what I'm talking about is mainly the conditions. For instance, the, uh, air quality condition, making sure the, uh, the, uh, road is watered, how many times it needs to be watered. The, the applicant was not able to demonstrate that he had a plan forward as to when he was going to, you know, how he was going to do these things. He just said he was going to meet them. He also, uh, mentioned, uh, that, uh, that he was going to, uh, meet them before he knew what they were. And that to me told me that he did not have a, a true plan on how he was going to fund it, how he was going to do it. Did he have, uh, did he have contractors already available to do it? And that's my major concern. It, it's the air quality piece, it's, it's the proposal to, uh, put new fencing around the property. There, there's just quite a few things that the, that the applicant has to meet that I just can't see any, um, small organization able to do.
So, Commissioner Shabazz, I apologize. So, you can't make finding C4 then?
That is correct.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Nellis?
Madam Chair, I think, um, you know, the, the approach generally here was, um, that the use was allowed on the site through a conditional use permit process. So, um, the premise to some extent is, is that it's a permitted use. Uh, we worked through the process with county staff. Um, they, they did not object to the issuance of the permit, but rather s- suggested a series of conditions. So, the staff report that came to and the recommendation that came to the planning commission was for approval. Hearing the, the comments and, uh, the positions, uh, that are being articulated by the, by the commission this evening, uh, I would like to ask for a short recess so that, uh, staff can, uh, consider what, uh, alternative to the recommendation of approval would look like and, uh, you know, possible motion.
Okay, uh, is ten minutes good?
Yes, that would.
Okay, uh, we'll be recessing for ten minutes and then we'll be right back.
Good.
And Mr. Arnalis?
Thank you, Chairwoman VanderWaal. Armando Arnalis, Assistant Community Services Director. So...
Can you move the mic a little closer, please? Thank you.
Recurring issue with me, sorry. Having heard the commission's concerns and the views that are being articulated in terms of their, the inability to support this conditional use permit request, staff has looked and have provided to you an alternative finding C2. And finding C2 is the one that we heard maybe most consistently across the board. And if there's to be a motion made for denial, I would, I, I would recommend that it be based on a finding or an inability to make a particular finding that is shared across the board by a majority of the planning commission. So I think certainly there's some concerns that were expressed with regard to the ability to make finding C1. There were some conditions or concerns expressed about the inability to make finding C4. Most consistently, again, was C2. So I will review with you what finding, this alternative finding C2 says, and that is that essentially the application as submitted and conditioned is not compatible with the existing uses of the adjacent properties. The reasoning being that most properties within the vicinity of the subject site are developed as single-family residences on large lots. The keeping of horses and other livestock is common and permitted on these properties, but a roping and dancing horse cultural event use is out of character for the area. So this is, again, how you might look at it if you, if you do not feel it's compatible. The proposed conditions of approval address operational standards and requirements that may, that may mitigate those impacts. However, we would find, the planning commission would find this use not compatible with the existing uses on adjacent properties due to the following: residential nature of the neighborhood in which this use is being proposed, and the limited routes of access to and from the subject property and adjacent properties, and thirdly, the inherent intensity, size, and regularity of the proposed event. So, again, to summarize, this would be an alternative to the finding C2 that's in the staff report. This would support a, a motion for denial. We have provided you with an alternative suggested motion based on an inability to make finding C2. And with that, I'll address any questions that you may have.
Do we have any questions? Commissioner Shabazz?
Yes, Madam Chair. I, I just would like to restate basically my concerns over C2. Basically, I'm not satisfied that the condition as set forth for the applicant to meet are proportionate and will mitigate the concerns of all the, all of the surrounding community, and that's my major concern.
Commissioner Spock, thank you. Any other commissioners have any questions? Comments? Thank you, Mr. Arnalis. Okay, I'll take questions, comments, motion. Commissioner Carey?
I'll, I'll give it a shot. I move to deny conditional use per, permit CU 18006 associated with PCN 180013 because of the proposed use as submitted and conditioned is incompatible with the existing or permitted uses of adjacent properties, contrary to finding C2 for the following reasons. A roping and dancing horse cultural event use is out of character for the area, the residential nature of the neighborhood in which this use is being proposed, the limited routes and access to and from both the subject property and adjacent properties, and the inherent intensity, size, and regularity of the proposed event.
I'll second.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Are, is there any discussion? Okay, with that, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next, we'll move along to general business. It's selection of commissioner to serve on the Tricky Meadows Regional Planning Commission to fill the term beginning July 1, 2018 from the following pool of applicants: Commissioner Mary Brock, Commissioner Scott Carey, Commissioner Shelley Reed, Commissioner Kareem Shabazz, and Commissioner Diane VanderWaal. Commissioner VanderWaal's term expires on June 30.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Commissioner Reed?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Commissioner VanderWaal to serve on the Tricky Meadows Regional Planning Commission to fill a term beginning on July 1, 2018.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a...
Commissioner Fewans, second.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we'll move along to public comment. Do we have any requests to speak? Okay, with that, I'll close the public comment. Do we have any comments from the commissioners?
I would like to make one comment.
Commissioner Peterson?
Mr. Carey already had mentioned how much we do appreciate staff. I do think they worked extremely hard on this. And it is awful hard to put conditions together to try to please every item that objection to it and for it and, and, and get the event there. I think you did an excellent job. And as I have stated before, the city has a very fine staff, and I'm proud to work with you.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson.
Commissioner Reed, I agree with what you just stated. I think the staff is, is wonderful to work with. Thank you.
I would like to just pile on here a little bit. You know, as we, as we discuss, you know, items like this, one of the things that makes Sparks just a great place to live are events like what the applicant was putting on, okay? Because, you know, it shows the, the deep level of cultural ties that we have to this land. So, you know, I, I truly appreciate, though, though we did, did not vote for this, I do appreciate you bringing this before this council, and thank you very much.
Any other comments from commissioners?
Commissioner VanderWaal, I have one more comment.
Yes, Commissioner Fewans?
You know, I think the main, main reason of this is compatibility in the neighborhood. And I would like for, I think it's important to see these kind of cultural, essentially, this kind of nice event, family-oriented event to be in the city of Sparks. I would really like to see that Gandolfo Arena and Parks and Rec Commission really look at Mr. Medina's event that he holds and especially next year. I, kind of discerning this year that it's all sold out, maybe, or filled up for this year, and maybe they can relook at it in the Parks Commission to maybe be able to slot him in somewhere at that location.
Great, thank you. With that, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
It'll be it.
Okay, thank you. We're done.